meeting of November 17th, 2021. We're glad to have a full house with us this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our Assistant City Clerk if she would call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Haddishel?
Here.
Councilmember Alverd?
Here.
Councilmember Rakuch, oops, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rakuchi is absent. Councilmember Mandonsa?
Here.
And Mayor Bernuscony?
Here. Thank you. I'd like to ask our Vice Mayor Bruce Haddishel if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My honor. Salute the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. To ask if our clerk would please announce the procedures for addressing the City Council?
Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. If you have not already picked up an agenda, they are available at the end of the staff table. If you are here to speak to an issue not on the agenda, you may do so under public comment. Twenty-five minutes is allotted for public comment with a three-minute time limit for each speaker. As a reminder, the Brown Act does not permit the City Council to take action on items not on the agenda. If you wish to speak to an item that is on the agenda tonight, you must stay within a five-minute time limit. Speakers may address the City Council at the podium, and the time limits will be monitored. When the lights on the podium blink red, we'll ask you to conclude your comments, and if you do address counsel tonight, we would appreciate your name for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will start off with the public hearing, item 5.1. This is the Northwest Roseville Landscape and Lighting District ballot measure. Let me just start reading here. So this is a time and place fix for the public hearing related to the ballot balloting procedures for the Northwest Pacific Plan Landscaping Lighting District. The public hearing is now open, and I would like to ask the clerk to report on the notice of this public hearing.
Notice of the public hearing and distribution of the assessment ballots have been completed in the manner and form as required by law.
Before proceeding further with the public hearing, I would like to ask our city attorney to provide both the City Council and the audience with a summary of proceedings that will take place during and after the close of this public meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Bernuscony. Good evening. During the public hearing, the City Council will consider all objections or protests to the proposed assessments. However, the City Council may only consider valid ballots submitted prior to the close of tonight's public hearing to determine whether a majority protest exists. A majority protest exists if, at the conclusion of the public hearing, the ballots timely submitted and not withdrawn opposing the assessment exceed the ballots submitted in favor of the assessment. The ballots timely submitted must be weighted according to the proportional financial obligation of each affected property for which a ballot was timely submitted. The public hearing may be continued from time to time. Therefore, the City Council may continue the tabulation of the ballots to a different time and location accessible to the public, provided that it announces the time and location of the continued tabulation at tonight's public hearing. If there is no majority protest, the City Council may adopt the proposed resolution authorizing the increase and levy of the annual assessments for the district.
Thank you, and we'll now have a staff presentation.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bernuscony and members of the City Council. I'm Jill Geller, your Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Director, and with me tonight is Janine Thrash, Management Analyst. Janine and I are here to present some information about the ballot measure for the Northwest Landscape and Lighting District. On September 15th, the Council adopted a resolution declaring its intent to ballot property owners for increased assessments to fund landscaping and streetscape improvements, and at that time you set tonight as the date for this public hearing. To provide some background information about the Northwest LLD, you'll see it depicted on this map. The green areas are considered Zone A, and the blue areas are Zone B. It is the largest and oldest LLD in the city, having been formed in 1989. At the September meeting, we informed you of our challenges to maintain the landscapes and streetscapes within this district at a level equitable with others in the city. The residents' assessment in the Northwest LLD has no inflationary factor, and therefore, it's not increased since 1989. We shared this chart, which provides example of costs for common items in 1989 and today. It's clear to see that costs have increased three to four times in this 30-plus-year timeframe, as have our costs to provide services. But since this assessment has stayed the same at $100 per homeowner per year since 1989, our annual funding to maintain the district has not changed. Had there been a 3% inflationary factor included when the district was formed, the assessment for the next fiscal year would be $265 per homeowner per year. The proposed increase on the ballot is $160 per year for Zone A and approximately $112 per year for Zone B. The current assessments for these two zones are slightly different, so these increases bring the assessments in both zones to a maximum of $260 per year. The ballot measure also includes an annual inflationary factor, which will allow us to keep up with increased costs in future years. As we shared with you in September, and it's important to note again tonight, these property owners were previously paying an annual assessment to pay off the bond that funded the initial infrastructure in this district, including streets, sewer, and waterline. That bond was paid off last year, and those homeowners no longer have this expense, which averaged approximately $340 per year per property owner. So even with the additional assessment proposed in the ballot measure, property owners will be paying less than they paid prior to 2020. Staff conducted three informational meetings for Northwest LLD property owners prior to the ballots being mailed out. The ballots were then mailed on October 1st and are due to the City Clerk's office today. So tonight, you have opened the public hearing for comment. We request that you will recess the public hearing for the count of ballots received and then reconvene at the end of tonight's council meeting to announce the ballot results. And at this time, I'll turn it back to the council, and Janine and I are here to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you for your presentation and the information. Does the council have any questions of staff?
No, not for me. A comment. Can I make a comment, or would you rather wait?
Go ahead.
Are you going to open the public comment?
Um, yes.
Okay, I'll wait till after. Sorry about that.
Okay. So the council will hear from any interested person who desires to address the council on this matter, and each person will have five minutes to speak, and we would appreciate your name for the record. So is there anyone here tonight that would like to address this topic? No? If you, you can come far to the podium.
Do I have to do anything here?
Good evening. You can just tell us your name.
Bill Mutsler. I just had a question about the, the map in general. Like you said, there's a, a green area and a blue area, but what about all the gray area? Do they, are they already assessed, or is it just?
Yes, the gray area is not part of the Northwest Landscape and Lighting District, and so they have assessments from their own districts.
I mean, in, in the pamphlet you sent out, you had listed the, like, fittament and different areas that there is assessed, but you never really explained where those, those areas are. I don't, that was just more a question. I actually emailed, was it Tara? Was that her name? She answered my question, but she, she never, I didn't ask the correct question that I was looking for.
Sir, this is public, this is just public comment, so we're just taking your comments at this time. If staff wants to answer the question, they can, but otherwise, you can address us, and it's just comments.
Well, my comment was, I didn't really, I didn't think the map then was very well explained.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to address this topic?
Can, can you still put your ballot in at this meeting, or?
No.
Oh, you can?
Yes, you can.
Oh, great. You have your ballot?
I do.
I'll take it.
You'll take it?
I'll be happy to take it.
All right, I gotta fill it out first.
Oh, okay. Better hurry, because we're about ready to recess the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Sir, here's a. If, if you have questions, you can come to the podium, and I think if some of you have ballots, where should they put their ballots?
I can reset them.
Okay, we'll take your ballots. Yep. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gary Hayworth, and we're generally in support, and we appreciate our parks and all the great work that you've done in Roseville. However, the comment that we have is when we do observe items within the parks that need to be addressed, we don't know who to call. In the times that we had called in the past, we hadn't gotten any response. Couple of items are sprinklers that are going, you know, continually going and soaking the road. Others are, you know, other, like, safety-related issues with trimming hedges that are, used to be trimmed and no longer are, and they're creating issues where kids are getting in there, and there's graffiti and refining beer and things of that nature. So we would ask that that be published in some way where people that are living in and around enjoying these parks, you know, can have a way to communicate with you, let you know what we see, and, and get some action on those items.
Thank you for your comment, and if you wanted to fill out a speaker card and put your phone number or contact information, we can have staff follow up with you. Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to address this topic? You can go to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Gary Lyons, and my only comment is with the, in regards to the landscaping in our town, be it in map areas or whatever, whatever areas, is there plans and foresight to start getting rid of grasses and watering and mowing and use some, start changing things to some more water drought-resistant and water-conservative planting? That's a comment.
Yeah, thank you for your comment.
Nobody's answering that right now, right?
This is public.
Just a comment.
Yeah, thank you. And if you wanted to fill out a speaker card and leave your contact information, okay, we'll be sure to have staff follow up with you. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to address this topic? Or fill in, or can submit your ballot? Okay, if there's, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no one else that would like to address this topic, do any of the City Council members have any further questions for city staff regarding this?
I just have a comment on it. I used to live in that area of Roseville, and definitely you could see that the, the maintenance levels had dropped way down because there's not enough money to cover maintaining those areas. And so I think this is a, a pretty neat opportunity for the community, and, and it's a choice of assessing, assessing yourself an extra tax for those who live in that area to, to make it more beautiful, because the council doesn't impose that upon you, so we're just gonna basically approve what you vote for, for your own community. I just thought it was a neat opportunity, and, and good luck tonight.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, and I'll stand to be corrected by our city manager, but a couple of ques, or a couple of comments out there. The City of Roseville has a pretty robust, I apologize, let's see if I can talk through this, a pretty robust frequently asked questions webpage, and I would encourage you to go to that if you have a sprinkler and, and, you know, any of us, certainly if you email us, we'll make sure that there is follow-up on that. And then with regards to zero scapeing and other things like that, the city has a pretty robust incentive program, cash for grass and other things like that. So, Mr. City Manager, did I accurately convey that information?
You did, you did Vice, Vice Mayor Haddishel. I think the one thing maybe I would add is we certainly are looking at different, different types of landscaping that require different types of water, and not only that, we use a lot of potable water in our new parks, so we're not using, or I'm sorry, recite, recirculated water, recycled water, not potable water, which is also a huge water savings for, for our city.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions to the City Council? Okay. All assessment ballots and replacement assessment ballots must be received by the city clerk before this public hearing is closed. Assessment ballots or replacement assessment ballots received after the close of this public hearing will not be tabulated. Are there any property owners who have not submitted their assessment ballots or need additional time to submit their assessment ballots? Or are there property owners who have submitted their assessment ballots but do not, but now wish to submit a replacement assessment ballot? Good, no one needs any more time? Okay. So if there are no owners who need additional time, I'll close the public hearing. Assessment ballots and replacement assessment ballots received by the city clerk after this time shall not be tabulated. The City Council shall now trial the matter and continue with the remainder of the agenda while our consultant tabulates the assessment ballots and replacement ballots received by the city clerk prior to the close of the public hearing. That will happen now?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, our consultants will, the, actually, the, the tabulation will take place in, in this meeting over here. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to oversee the, the tabulations, you're, you're welcome to join them.
So it's, I think it's right, right back in the room?
Yeah, right in there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we will move forward. We have three presentations this evening, and then we will open it up for public comment. So the first is item 6.1, Proclamation Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month. I have asked Councilmember Scott Alver to proceed with the proclamation, and he will meet those at the podium. So if you're here for item 6.1, you can.
This is going to be presented to the manager of the Roseville Seek Temple, Harpul Singh?
He's not here.
He's not here, okay. Are you okay if I have my mask off here? November is also Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month, and we have a presentation that has a bunch of whereas's in it, so pardon me, I'm going to summarize through this, and this is on behalf of the City Council. Whereas Sikhs first arrived in the United States more than 125 years ago, and Sikh men worked with, worked on farms and lumber mills on the Pacific coast and on the Panama Canal. And whereas Sikhs are the fifth-largest religious group by number, with more than 25 million people around the world, an estimated 500,000 Americans are of Sikh origin, and more than a third of the nation's Sikh population resides in California. And whereas Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and walks of life, making rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, including service as members of the United States Armed Forces, and have made and continue to make significant contributions to our great nation in public service, in agriculture, medicine, trucking, science, and technology, and distinguish themselves by fostering greater respect among people through faith and service. And whereas this month in November is significant for the Sikh celebrations of Diwali, the birthday of the first guru and founder of Sikhism, Guru Nanak Devji in 1469, was that all right? And installation of the Sikh scriptures as the final and eternal guru in 1708. And whereas today, the City of Roseville seeks to further the diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared experiences of Sikh Americans. Now, therefore, the Roseville City, the mayor and the Roseville City Council do hereby proclaim the month of November 2021 to be Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. Would you like to make some, make a statement?
Good evening, council people, mayor, friends, neighbors, and those people on the Zoom, the internet, I guess, that we hope are watching. This is a brief presentation. Let me start with this. "When the lamp is lit, darkness is dispelled. Where there is light of knowledge, ignorance is dispelled." That's from our scriptures. Just 10 days ago, there were 100,000 people in the Yubus City area. A number of our fellow Plastik County Sikhs came up, and we celebrated the anniversary of the scriptures, as Councilman Scott just shared. There are a couple of other things that happened this month. Let me go through them quickly here for you, because I want to get to the big one. Diwali is a festival that's been going on for thousands of years. The next group is going to tell you about that. At a point, when we had a third guru who was guru for about 20 years, he became guru in his 70s, so he was a senior citizen guru, there was a gathering on Diwali. When the cornerstone was laid for where we now have this golden temple that everybody's heard of, that cornerstone was laid on Diwali by a Sufi saint, his name was Mia Mir. We're going to come back to him. The sixth guru, this is the big story. He was asked to come to a place near Agua, near the Taj Mahal, to pray because the emperor was not well. He was lured there. It was a prison. He was not free to go. He found out there were 52 other prisoners who were not charged with anything. Essentially, they were just kept by the emperor for no reason. That Sufi saint, who, from 1577, and this is in 1619 by now, so he's, you know, he's on in a few years, he pulled the strings, and he let the emperor's people know, hey, wait a minute, the guru came, he prayed for you, you're well now, you can't hold him. The order that came down from the emperor was this. The guru was free to go. The guru recognizing, and he was 23, 24, that's how young he was. He put a condition. "I will leave when I can take everybody here." Okay, emperor revised his order. And this is the show and tell part of it. So mayor, one of the reasons I'm wearing this is, so this is a tunic. I guess you'd call it robe, right? So these tails, tails, tassels, you can put tassels on them. Here's what the order was, the revised order by the emperor. However many prisoners can hold on your tassels, can go with you. So what did the guru do? Not only did he have a good tailor who created a tunic, a robe, with 52 tassels, he had a good lawyer. He walked out of the prison. It took a couple of days to get to Umrat Ser, which is that holy city, where, a Sikh emperor, a Maharaja, later on. He put the gold on that golden temple. So guru, the sixth guru, arrived at Umrat Ser, and everybody was celebrating Diwali. So that is the Sikh Diwali Thanksgiving story, that not only did he freely leave, he took, and there were Hindus, there were noblemen, imprisoned, you know, just because the emperor could do it. And it's about liberation, it's about And it's about liberation, it's about light over dark, about justice over persecution, and we celebrate Diwali for that reason. I just wanted to add two more things. I celebrate this month especially because that Maharaja that put the gold on the golden temple, he was born, think about, two days ago, three days ago, in 1780, and it's also my birthday month. Thank you, everybody, and we would like to take a picture. When the other group is done, we can do it together.
We'll come down now and do a quick photo. Did you want a photo?
We want a larger group.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Except we have Item 6.2, A Proclamation for Hindu Heritage Month, October 2021, and Councilmember Tracy Mendoza will meet you at the podium. If there's someone that wants to come forward.
It's my honor to present this proclamation to you this evening, and I want to summarize for our viewers at home and those of you in the audience that can't see this, what we have in this proclamation this evening. Whereas, excuse me, Hinduism is the third-largest religion in the world with more than 1 billion followers worldwide, including several million in the United States. And whereas the City of Roseville is home to a vibrant Hindu community, and the Hindu heritage, culture, traditions, and values have enriched our diverse city. And whereas Hindu Americans have made significant contributions across all fields, including science, education, medicine, law, politics, business, culture, sports, and more. And whereas during October of this year, the Hindu community across the nation will collectively celebrate Hindu heritage. And whereas Hindu Heritage Month provides an opportunity to focus on Hindu culture and its diverse spiritual traditions rooted in India. And whereas the Hindu Swamizak Sang USA, Damaric, Organizations of Greater Sacramento, my apologies for not getting that right, the local Hindu community and over 1 billion worldwide will reverently observe the festival of Diwali, the festival of lights, where celebrants renew their commitment to upholding values of truth, non-harming, and restraint through their thoughts, words, and actions. Now therefore, on behalf of Krista Bernascony, Mayor of the Roseville, of Roseville, California, and my fellow City Council members, we do hereby proclaim October of 2021 as Hindu Heritage Month, and the significance of Diwali, the message, tolerance, compassion, and victory of good over evil. And at this time, I will invite you up to say a few words and present you with this proclamation. Thank you.
Respected Mayor Krista Bernascony, Vice Mayor, City of Roseville Councilmembers, fellow residents of Roseville, and my dear friends, namaste to each one of you. The divinity within me boils down to the divinity within you. My name is Saumya, and I'm a proud resident of the City of Roseville. I have lived in the City of Roseville for the past 15 years with my husband Venu. We have a seven-year-old daughter, Dhaya. Today, with deep sense of respect and gratitude, I, on behalf of the Hindu Swamsevak Sang, Hindu communities who collectively preserve, practice, promote, and advance ideals and values of Hindu Dharma, and on behalf of Indian community of the City of Roseville and Greater Sacramento area, accept the proclamation. Thank you for recognizing October as Hindu Heritage Month, and also recognizing the significance of Diwali. The City of Roseville is a residence to diverse immigrant communities who call this wonderful place home. It is also a home for the vibrant Hindu community. Hindu Americans have contributed to build the city into the best place to live, work, and raise families. They continue to help foster prosperity and innovation throughout the city, the state, and the nation. October is an important month for we Hindus. Each year, significant celebratory festivals that the members of the Hindu community across the globe observe occur during the month of October, predominant among them being Navaratri, a devotional festival celebrated over nine nights, Diwali, the festival of lights symbolizing the victory of light, of knowledge, over the darkness of ignorance, and Durga Puja, a festival commemorating the victory of good over evil. Festivals are an expressive way to celebrate glorious heritage, culture, and traditions. These festivals create a special atmosphere, diverting the mind from worldly concerns and joyfully focusing on spiritual matters. They also forge a healthy sense of belonging by peacefully bringing together individuals, families, and communities. Today, as the global community grows more and more interconnected, we discuss, even encourage and accept other cultures, ideas, and the ways of life as we become more and more aware of our common human bond. As we celebrate the Hindu Heritage Month, we shall reiterate that vasudhava kutumbhakam, meaning the entire world is one big family, is the key to harmonious and sustained existence on the planet Earth. On this occasion, we offer to extend our continued support to help the Roseville City Council in improving our city through community partnership. Together, we can make a significant difference. Thank you. Tani lath.
Hello, esteemed mayor and councilmembers, and namaste.
My name is Ishana Dattusoya, and I'm a Hindu American ninth-grade student living in the City of Roseville. I would like to speak about one of our prominent service projects. Seva Diwali is a nationwide project which strives to make a difference in the lives of those suffering with food insecurity. Seva translates to selfless service. During this drive, hundreds of people make their homes collection centers for their neighbors to contribute. People are encouraged to donate canned goods, non-perishable items, and winter clothing to food pantries and homeless shelters. Last year, through this project, we collected about 300,000 pounds of supplies across 26 states. In the Greater Sacramento area alone, we collected 2,600 pounds that were donated to eight food banks and shelters, including the Gathering Inn in Roseville. To spread awareness for this project, we also have a Diwali parade of lights, in which we drive around the city with our cars decorated with lights. We were glad to have Councilman Scott, who flagged off this year's parade and participated with his decorated car. I look forward to serving the city to the best of my ability and playing my part in making it an excellent place to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Namaste, and good evening, everyone. I'm Bhargav Vivekanandan. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today in this auspicious time of the Hindu heritage celebration. So as Ishanaji said, I mean, Hinduism offers us a beautiful, simple way to actually realize the inner divinity within one and all, including all living beings, irrespective of race, religion, ethnicity, caste, and color. And this is the way of selfless service, helping humanity and the community. So this is exactly what HSS stands for, and in those times of dire circumstances, the true valor of our organization shines through, as exemplified by HSS' Seva, or Community Service Activities. We swung to action to help during the COVID-19 pandemic situation in the last two years by assisting vaccination services in 27 states and 198 urban centers nationwide. HSS worked closely with several mayors, temples, and vaccination centers to make the vaccination programs successful and help people gain the much-needed vaccination. Wildfire relief, HSS provided help for fire survivors at Oroville, donated food, and other necessary items, collection drive for the victims of NorCal Fire, knit beanies campaign for the fire victims, food box distribution with support from California Emergency Food Link. And we do food donation drives as much as possible, we do a lot of food donation. HSS performs, you know, across California and prodding for the needy, including the most recent donation through Seva Diwali Sacramento, California. Generous efforts by HSS at Oakland, California, food preparation and distribution for 60 guests at Gathering Inn, and 60 lunch sacks, including spaghetti, sandwiches, fruit, cookies, and water, to name a few. So Seva is the true essence of HSS, and we are the epitome of this pinnacle of Hindu philosophy, and we thank you again. We are always here to help and serve Roseville, the State of California, and the nation. Thank you.
Yes, come forward for our picture.
It took a whole bunch.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
It took like four or five of them.
Thank you, Kara.
She would have loved it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Congratulations.
Pauline usually, you know, swats my hand.
Very much.
Big bag of M&Ms.
Thank you.
It's usually one big bag.
You're a lovely speaker.
Give me a photo. Okay, good. Oh, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You are all welcome to stay, but we need to continue with our meeting, so we'll just give you a few more moments. If you need to go home and have dinner and homework, all that, we get it, but we've got to keep going with our meeting, so we'll just give it a few more seconds. Okay, thank you all for being here. Okay, we will move forward. We will move on to our next proclamation, actually, we've changed the order, we'll be on...
We pulled it off of consent.
Okay, so it's a proclamation for Family Court Awareness Month, and Kara, is that right? Okay.
Might be able to hear me this way. Hi. So I will read the proclamation that you asked for us to provide, and then give you a few moments to say a few words, if you'd like. Okay, so this evening, we're here to offer a proclamation for the Family Court Awareness Month, and the mission at One Moms Battle and the Family Court Awareness Month Committee is to increase awareness on the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. Their mission is to increase awareness on the importance of education and training on domestic violence, childhood trauma, and post-separation abuse for all professionals working within the family court system. Their mission is to educate judges and other family court professionals on the empirical data and research that is currently available. Such research is a critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interests of children. Their mission is fueled by the desire for awareness and change in the family court system. So on behalf of the City Council, I do by here proclaim November 21st as Family Court Awareness Month, and encourage the communities to support organizations and individuals who act as advocates and allies within the family court system and who are proponents for continued awareness and information education among family court professionals. So thank you for making us aware of this, and I'll offer you the floor, say a few words. Okay, thank you.
I am very thankful to the City of Roseville and Mayor Beresconci for acknowledging November as Family Court Awareness Month through this proclamation. I am humbled and overjoyed by your response to support this effort. My goal, of course, is to bring awareness on the lack of knowledge, resource, and protocol changes needed within the court system related to post-separation abuse, and the great need for our communities for codified change and further intervention to reduce the use of the courts as a tool to further harm partners and their children. Many people are touched by domestic violence every day, maybe even some of you here today, I don't know. Unfortunately, the abuses don't stop at the door of the home or the jail cells. Most often, it extends to every facet of a victim's life and the lives of their children. I myself was a victim some years ago, in which the father of my children, sorry, my daughter's here, so I'm a little tearful, utilized the court's outdated code and procedure to continue to harm our children and myself. It took an army of people and agencies to unravel the mess he made, to bring him to justice, and to build a wall of safety around myself and my family, and extended family and friends as well. Many parents do not have the knowledge or ability to steer that course alone. I look forward to a future in which this is the norm and not the exception. My story is what pushed me into career in the legal field, where I made a choice to no longer be a victim, to advocate for myself, for my children, and my community by raising my voice in support of measured changes amongst my colleagues. My priority is to continue to bring light to this very important topic, and hope that with this movement, we can make changes to keep our children safe and help victims still trapped in the system looking for reprieve and safety. Bringing awareness to such an important topic is the first step with this proclamation, and we are slowly making a difference. On behalf of myself, One Moms Battle, the community of families we have here today and in our greater community, and my daughter who gets to see this happen, I want to thank you for hearing our voices and for making this proclamation. That's all.
Thank you for being here. Was important to you, would you like to have a photo before we go, or are you all set? Okay, it's totally fine.
Photo, photo.
We want a photo with you, how about that? Okay, we'll take a quick photo. Okay, we'll take a quick photo.
No, two cameras to look at.
I'm going to zoom in one more time. Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right, we will move on to public comment. Now is the time for anyone to come forward and address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. Does anyone have any? We also do public comment at the end of our meeting, too, if you want to wait around and make your comments, then. All right, if there's no public comment, I'll close public comment. And we'll move on to the consent calendar.
All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine in nature and will be passed by one motion. There will be no discussion of consent calendar items unless a member of the City Council, staff, or the public requests an item be removed. We have removed item 8.18, which was the proclamation that we just presented. I have no request from staff, but does anyone in the audience wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? Okay, then may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item 8.18?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Haddishel?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandanza?
Yes.
Vice and Mayor Beresconci, excuse me.
Yes, thank you. Okay, and we will move on to item 9.1, JM 50 Park Site Project Master Plan and Professional Design Services Agreement. Good evening, Jill.
Good evening, Mayor Beresconci and members of the council. Once again, I'm Jill Geller, your Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Director. It's my pleasure to share with you tonight the JM 50 School Park Master Plan. Here you can see the location of this future park. It's an eight-acre park, which is located in the Sierra Vista specific plan area. The top graphic shows the specific plan map, where the park property JM 50 is circled. The larger graphic on the lower half of the screen gives a broader view of the park's location, indicated by the red star. The park is situated on Upland Drive, west of Fittament, and north of Vista Grande. Center School District's future Rex Fortune Elementary School will be located just south of the park. And you can see the school property identified as JM 61 on the specific plan map. Our public outreach for this park consisted of two virtual workshops, a survey, and a write-in period. During COVID, we held a number of virtual public workshops. For this park, we held our first workshop on February 9th of this year, where approximately 20 residents participated. We reviewed the park planning process, gathered feedback on suggested park features, and answered the attendees' questions. This workshop, like all of the workshops we've held virtually, was recorded, posted online, and available to residents who were unable to attend or who wanted to review the information that was presented at a later date. We took suggestions from this first workshop, and then we surveyed the residents on their top preferences. Nineteen people completed the survey. A second virtual workshop was then held on April 7th. A concept sketch was presented based on the feedback from the first workshop and the survey. Staff reviewed the concept sketch with the attendees and answered their questions. And after that meeting, we opened up a two-week write-in period. All of these efforts result in the master plan you see on the screen. This final master plan proposes a children's play area, a swing area, a restroom, baseball field, open multi-use turf area, a picnic area with shade structure, off-street parking, and a looped perimeter walkway. The cost for construction of the park is estimated at $2.5 million, and maintenance is estimated at $120,000 per year to be paid through the Sierra Vista CFD Number Two. This park offers a series of firsts. It's our first park-school partnership with the Center Unified School District. And as a side note, we're also working with the Center School District on an adventure club site at the future Rex Fortune Elementary School. It's our first park in the Sierra Vista specific plan area, and it's our first park to utilize the design-assist-build delivery model. So, in addition to requesting approval of the park master plan, tonight, we also request approval of a professional design services agreement with Quadriga Landscape Architecture. We're excited to utilize the design-assist-build model. We will use Quadriga's 30% complete plans in an RFP for a contracting partner. This provides the potential contractors with the goal and the intent of the park plan. And our three-way team, the design consultant, the contractor, and staff, will more closely collaborate on completion of the construction plans. We feel the benefits of this approach will be a more collaborative team approach, fewer change orders due to more effective collaboration and communication between all parties, resulting in greater cost controls, a sooner start to construction. We can begin with grading and underground work while the remainder of the plans are being completed. And hopefully, all of this speeds up our timeline for completion. Lastly, you should know that the master plan was approved unanimously by the Parks and Recreation Commission at their June 7th meeting, recommending council approval. So, tonight, we do request your approval of the master plan for JM 50 School Park and your approval of the professional design services agreement with Quadriga Landscape Architecture. So, at this time, I will stand for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. That's exciting. Does the council have any questions?
No questions.
Any questions of staff?
No question, just a comment later.
Okay. We good? Any questions? Okay, go ahead.
The completion date we're expecting for use would be 23, spring of 23?
Likely 23. We don't have it projected out yet since we're just getting started with the design. So, it will likely be 23.
Yeah, I know for a fact that the neighbors are jazzed about the idea because there's no park out there anywhere in that whole specific plan. So, they're pretty excited about that coming, so.
All right, we're good. All right, I will open it up to public comment if the council doesn't have any further questions. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this item? You can come forward to the podium. Okay, I'll close public comment. Does the council have any other comments for staff before we have a motion?
I just had one. It's exciting to see this is the first park. I'm sure there'll be several others, but the first one, the central Sierra Vista specific plan. And this is just another example, you know, of why people continue to choose Roseville. I mean, this is, you know, going to serve our, the residents that are out there and continue to serve others as we build out that side of town. And it just never amazes me, you know, the number of parks and the, just the variety of parks within our city. And as you were running through it, it just continues to reinforce why Roseville is that destination here in South Placer. And it's just, it's good to see this come online and move forward. So, I'm happy to be a part of that and thank the Parks and Rec staff, and thank everybody who worked hard to get this where it is. It's a big deal, especially for those residents out there. So, thank you.
Yep, okay, thank you. All right, are we ready for a motion? Are we good? Any other comments, questions? Okay.
Motion is to adopt Resolution Number 21-463, approving a professional design services agreement by and between the city of Roseville and Quadriga Landscape Architecture and Planning, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the city of Roseville, and approve the master plan for the JM 50 Park Site Project. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Haddishel?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandanza?
Yes.
Mayor Beresconci?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, item 10.1, Council Discretionary Funds from Roseville Joint Union High School District. I will recuse myself, since my firm does work for the high school district. And I'll be, you can call me back already.
Counsel, item 10.1 is a request for council discretionary funds for a $3,000 sponsorship from the Roseville Joint Union High School District for a local scholarship program. The program would provide $3,000 for three seniors to each receive a $1,000 scholarship. Is Amy Price in the, Amy? Amy is available to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, council members. I'm Jackie Sider, and I am one of the co-coordinators of the Roseville Joint Union High School Scholarship Program.
And I'm Amy Price, also the co-coordinator of the program.
So, first of all, thank you for allowing us to present tonight. As co-coordinators, we have, we're dedicated to improving this program for our seniors. We are here to request the discretionary funds of $3,000 to benefit the class of 2022. The local scholarship program was created about 50 years ago, and it was created by family members, most of the time in memorial situations for alumni. And it was also contributed by community members and local businesses and clubs. Over the years, this book, as it used to be called, has changed a lot. It has changed in how it looks, how it's presented to our students, and most importantly, on how many students are applying. We do a lot of work trying to encourage our seniors to resource these scholarships. Last year, we had 2,770 students who turned in 1,785 applications. Out of those applications, we were able to award 227 scholarships, which is amazing. But if you do the math, it's 8% of the students who applied. So, we are wanting to increase this program. The amount of money awarded to our seniors has doubled in the last seven years, so we are doing work on our part. We've reached out to our community members. I personally have met with the parents' clubs, the boosters' clubs, the Chamber of Commerce, to bring awareness and to describe the need for scholarships for our students. We, as a district, are working hard to share the opportunity to fund a scholarship. And with the help of the city of Roseville, we could not only help three seniors with a scholarship, but we could also bring attention to our program and hopefully encourage and inspire others in our community to do the same. Some of the businesses and organizations supporting our program right now are the Roseville Host Lions, the Kiwanis Club, and the Rotary Club. We also have memorial scholarships. For example, the Sylvia Bassana Scholarship, and just recently, the Sergeant Nicole G. Scholarship. The price tag for four-year colleges and universities have become out of reach for many students and families. And even our students who are turning towards the path of a two-year community college still face a lot of fees. There's lab fees, there's parking, there's books. Every student now has to have their own personal computer laptop. And they're lucky to have that at the high school level. But once they leave, they no longer have that device. Many times, these scholarships are a difference between a student choosing college or straight from high school to employment. Many students return from their education and become workers in our community. We are thankful for the local support, and they are thankful, and they want to give back. Just recently, we had an Oakmont graduate who received a scholarship, paid it forward, and now has a Family Ling Scholarship. So, it's working. These future workers are our future in our community. And I can't think of a better way to support them than to help and assist in their education. And at this time, Amy would like to address the council with some testimonials of a former winner. Thank you.
So, this is a thank you letter from one 2020 grad that won a scholarship. In exactly her words, "I grew up in a household where pursuing higher education was unheard of. Growing up, I believed that I wouldn't be any different. Although I had a passion to learn, I knew my parents wouldn't be able to handle the burden of helping me financially. Prior to me receiving the news, my family had sat me down to discuss the possibility of me not attending college because of financial hardship due to COVID-19. I had accepted the fact that I just would not be able to follow my dreams of becoming a nurse. Then my life completely changed when I received the news I had been selected to receive one of our scholarships. With this news, I decided to continue my studies instead of giving up on my dreams. Thanks to you, my life has changed drastically. At this moment, I wouldn't be sending my transcripts or AP scores to a university. I would be filling out job applications for a full-time job. This scholarship has allowed me to proudly say I will be the first of my family to attend college. I promise that this funding will not go to waste. I will continue to work hard, persevere through the difficult challenges, and give back to my community." We just wanted to thank you guys so much for considering our proposal. And we understand that you guys work so hard for the city of Roseville. It's like the best place to live. If you grant us these funds, we pledge to award some well-deserving seniors a scholarship to take some financial burden off their shoulders. Thank you.
Great. Amy and Jackie, my colleagues and I might have some questions. So, Scott?
I wanted to know, first of all, thank you for running that program. I do think that's an important program. But what is the criteria that will be used for these three students receiving the money?
So, currently, we are looking at our CTE pathways. That's somewhere in our scholarship program that's lacking, meaning that, like, for example, at Oakmont High School, they have the Health Academy. Roseville High School has the Culinary Program. Wood Creek has a Construction Program, et cetera. So, we are looking to create a scholarship for those students. Usually, we follow a format of a minimum GPA of at least like 2.5, and we would consider financial need, obviously.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Mandanza?
Nope, thank you very much.
Yeah, Councilmember Albert asked one of the questions that was on my mind. And in addition, how will the sponsors? I mean, you've raised quite a bit of money. How will you share with the students, you know, the recognition of all the sponsors? Will the city of Roseville itself be recognized as one of the sponsors?
Most definitely. We have created a scholarship website at the district level. Each school, each comprehensive high school has their own website. But we've created this as a way to bring recognition. We also have a senior award night at every single one of our schools. And so, the students who are receiving the award, there will be a description of the scholarship, who funded it. We invite the city council members to join us at those senior award nights. And so, and our principals respectively give recognition that night. But there will be on the website an opportunity for our community members to go on, look and see all of our scholarship donors, the description, and have an opportunity to support that by making a donation as well. That's the way that we're trying to really improve our program. In 2014, for example, Roseville High School, for example, earned $47,900 in scholarships. And the class of 2020 received $135,800. So, we're working hard at trying to grow this program. But as we do, the need for scholarships is increasing. We have a lot of first generational students who don't even understand the process of college or think that it's attainable. So, we're trying really hard to make that connection with them and make this an opportunity that they can go towards.
All right, well, thank you very much. Before we make a decision, I want to open this up for public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to make any public comment on this item? I'll bring it back to the dais and ask my colleagues if they have any final comments?
Yeah.
This is wonderful.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, at this time of the year, you know, even though the scholarships won't be awarded till later this year, this seems to be the, as we saw from some of the earlier presentations, this is the time of the year in which our community rallies together for those who don't really look for a handout. But we offer the hand up. We'll be doing food banks and Tommy Apostolists in a different format this year, so. Thank you for bringing forward this idea. And I'll entertain a motion from the council. Do you want to read it?
To approve a request for a $3,000 sponsorship from Council Discretionary Funds for Roseville Joint Union High School District for a local scholarship program. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Haddishel?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert? Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
And Councilmember Mendonza?
Yes.
Thank you for your great work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Item 10.2, the mid-year staffing changes. We have our Human Resources Manager or Director Stacy Peterson here this evening. Hello.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Stacy Peterson, Human Resources Director, and I'm here to present on item 10.2, which is our mid-year staffing and salary updates. Periodically throughout the year, we look at various department needs and look at what kind of work needs to get done and how we might need to do it differently and reorganize the work. And in this staff report, we're recommending various recommendations for departments across the city with Parks and Recreation and Libraries, the Electric Department, Environmental Utilities, Finance, Information Technology Development Services, and Public Works Department. In this staff report, we're also recommending a change to the city clerk salary range to reduce that by 9% effective January 1st of 2022. And overall, in this mid-year report, we are reclassifying 12 vacant positions, making those recommendations anyways. We're recommending to reclassify one staffed position, add five new positions, retitle three classifications, and make several salary schedule updates. And this has to do with sometimes changes in programming, like the Be Well Roseville Program and Parks and Recreation, being able to staff that program, certainly responding to drought needs and Environmental Utilities, creating some positions, and, and Development Services with new building inspectors to be able to address workload needs. So with that said, the fiscal impact results in a net general fund impact for fiscal year 2021, '22 of $86,000. There will be costs to the Youth Development Fund, Information Technology Operations, Internal Services Fund, and Utility Funds, which will be offset by savings from our recommended classification, reclassifications. There will be salary savings from vacant positions that help offset costs, and also reductions in temporary services staffing in order to offset these budget costs. I highlighted the Development Services. There is a cost of $293,000 for the new, two new building inspectors, which will be offset by increased building revenues. I just wanted to share with staff that it was certainly learned through this review that currently we have our building inspectors completing this year over about 30 inspections per day, when the best practices for the industry is 16. In the past three years, they've been doing about 25 per year. So this is just a highlight of just the need that the departments are feeling. We have staff who are doing an amazing job, and staff recommends adding those two building inspector positions. So with this, the overall recommendations is to adopt an ordinances to approve the management and local 39 A&amp;B salary schedules effective November 20th of 2021, adopt an ordinance to approve the temporary salary schedule effective November 20th of 2021, adopt an ordinance to approve the management A&amp;B salary schedules to reflect the salary reduction for the city clerk effective January 1st of 2022, approve the attached citywide allocation schedule that captures all the reclassifications effective November 20th of 2021, and adopt two new ordinances, two ordinances to approve the attached budget adjustments for Environmental Utilities and Development Services. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation and all the work that went into that, too. My goodness. Does council have any questions of Stacy?
No, at this time. Yeah, Stacy, can you describe, the process is an iterative one?
Yes.
It's not by fiat, right? You sit down with the department heads and the key management positions and do an annual review, and, you know, they have metrics that they meet and that they've set out for themselves. And so it's a collaborative process that you're, you're bringing forward. Is that?
Absolutely. Yes. And oftentimes, we'll hire a consultant, and we'll look at the classifications, too. This is not just staff work, but we utilize outside consultants to evaluate and identify classification changes, compensation changes, to evaluate the market. So it's, it's a, a good process.
And some of these positions are enterprise fund-based, so?
Yes.
And don't come out of our general fund. Okay.
That is correct.
Okay. I'll open up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this item? Okay. I'll close public comment. Does council have any other final thoughts before we have a motion? Okay.
The motion is to adopt ordinance number 6419, amending ordinance number 6381, the salary ordinance for management employees, as amended by Appendix P to be effective November 20th, 2021, as an urgency measure, and adopt ordinance number 6420, amending ordinance number 6382, the salary ordinance for employees represented by the International Union of Operating Engineers, Stationary Engineers Local 39, as amended by Appendix K to be effective November 20th, 2021, as an urgency measure, and adopt ordinance number 6421, amending ordinance number 6347, the salary ordinance for seasonal temporary employees, as amended by Appendix M to be effective November 20th, 2021, as an urgency measure, and adopt ordinance number 6422, amending ordinance number 6381, the salary ordinance for management employees, as amended by Appendix P to be effective January 1st, 2022, as an urgency measure, and adopt ordinance number 6423, authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure, and adopt ordinance number 6424, authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Hattishel?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza?
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Stacy. Item 11.1 is the Grants Advisory Commission. We have an unscheduled vacancy appointment.
I need to recuse myself from this. One of the applicants is a past client.
So the item before us, we have an unscheduled vacancy. The city posted a recruitment for the Grants Advisory Commission. We had two folks submit applications. Our job right now is to vote from one of the names.
Yes. We, the City Clerk's Department had conducted a recruitment for four weeks in October, and we did interviews, and those interviews were done in November. And I have placed ballots in front of you to cast your votes. If you'd pass those to me, hopefully we were needing three ballots. The applicants are Nina Acosta and Sagan Bachtold. Are either one of those individuals here? Ah. Did you wish to make any comments tonight?
Can you come to the podium? I'm sorry. And just tell us your name again. Thank you.
My name is Nina Acosta. I am here for the grant advisory appointment. I just wanted to thank you for this opportunity to be able to serve my community in this, this way. I'm a social worker. I've been a social worker for the last 18 years, working in Sacramento County and in Placer County. Currently, I am the Victim Witness Program Director for Sacramento County District Attorney's Office, and in my spare time, I have offered my services to do grant reviews for the federal government for various different departments and discretionary funds that are multimillion-dollar grants from across the United States. I also provide volunteer services locally here in Placer County with Hearts Landing Ranch. We provide, they provide equine therapy for foster youth and former foster youth, and they're expanding into a veterans program. My family serves with me at that ranch. We liken to, call ourselves the poopologists because we muck stalls, and we make sure that the stable is all ready and healthy for the ability to serve the community in that way. And I just wanted to be here to see if there's any questions that you had for me for this position.
Okay. Thank you so much for your comments and for your service to the community. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Okay.
Okay. Taking a look at the ballots, Councilmember Mendonza votes for Nina Acosta. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Hattishel, excuse me, votes for Nina Acosta, and Mayor Bernasconi votes for Nina Acosta. May I have a motion to approve Nina Acosta to the Grants Advisory Commission to a term expiring June 30th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Hattishel?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza?
Yes.
Mayor Bernasconi?
Yes. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome. All right. We'll move into department updates. Hello, Sonia.
Hello. It's Scott.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi and members of the city council. I'm Sonia Roscoe, your city clerk, and it's my pleasure to be before you this evening to provide you a brief update on the City Clerk's Department. The City Clerk Department supports the city manager and city departments and serves the community. Facilitation of the city council, law and regulation, and the Independent Redistricting Commission are important cornerstones as we facilitate the meetings by preparing agendas and attending those meetings. We follow meetings, following meetings, we complete all approved actions of the city council, including contracts, and if we're, if required, we record all official documents. And finally, we prepare the minutes outlining actions taken by the legislative body, and we archive all permanent documents. Some statistics for fiscal year 2021, we had 32 city council meetings, seven independent redistricting commission meetings, and 11 Law and Regulation Commission meetings, which were all attended by City Clerk Department staff. On the right of the screen, you'll find a summary of other primary duties of the department. I will cover the passport facility, redistricting, elections, technology, and the boards and commissions this evening. Post-pandemic, the City Clerk Department will be investigating ways to enhance services at the passport facility. When I came before you last time, I told you that we wanted to provide TSA pre-check at our facility. Staff was in contact with the Department of Homeland Security right before the pandemic happened, and the Department of Homeland Security then ceased all new applications. So we will continue now to reach out to provide this new service. Unfortunately, the passport service during COVID was closed for 33 weeks. In the slide, I've included processing figures during COVID since March 2020 to July 2021, which is not either a calendar year or a fiscal year. While back in the office, staff worked split shifts after the 33-week closure. The facility fully reopened with full-time staffing on August 1st of 2021. During the pandemic, we processed over 10,000 passports, 8,000 passport photos, 600 live scans for city employees and the public, and 158 notarizations. Total revenue as of tonight's meeting is approximately 469,000, which is under our target, but to be expected based on the fact that we were closed for 33 weeks. We do look forward to a complete year of revenue as the facility didn't open till October of 2019 and then had to close down in March of 2020. So a full year of revenue will be a great thing to have. I'd like to take this opportunity to, to thank the staff in the passport facility for their efforts to serve the public from all around the region. We have applicants as far as Redding down to San Jose that come to our passport facility because we have ample staff to, to process that. We, we provide their passports and travel documents, as well as providing live scan for the public, and the center, again, also provides notary services. So drawing of the new council districts maps is underway, and the city clerk and assistant city clerk are working as staff representatives for the Independent Redistricting Commission in partnership with Senior Deputy City Attorney Joe Mandell and Public Information Officer Brian Jacobson. The IRC has been meeting since May of 2021. The IRC will hold six public hearings in January, including a public hearing on a Saturday, in order to facilitate widespread community input. The new district map will be adopted by the IRC in January, on January 24th of 2022, with the maps being delivered to the city council in early February. Adjustments will occur to the new maps due to the U.S. Census numbers and growth in the city. With a total population of nearly 148,000 residents, the ideal population for any district is 29,555. The district with the greatest population is District 5, with a deviation of plus 45.8%. And the district with the lowest population growth is District Number 1, with a deviation of a negative 16.9%, placing the city at a total deviation of 62.8%. That is far outside the 10% required range, required per district by law. The City Clerk Department conducted the first district election in 2020, which included electing three council members under the district format, and the approval of nine submitted charter amendments, which is the first in Roseville's history that any charter amendment will be placed on the ballot passed, all of them. The November 2022 election will officially move all seats elected to the district format. The fundraising period for the November 8th election will begin on February 8th, with District 2 and 4 seats appearing on the ballot, utilizing the new district map adopted by the Independent Redistricting Commission. That's why it's important that we have the map adopted in, before the council by February 1st, in order to make sure that those running for council know what district that they're in. And as a reminder, the contribution limit is now 510, which is an action you took under the Charter Amendment Finance Amendments. It has now gone up to $510, so an extra $10 per single source. The City Clerk Department has actively participated in technology projects and implementation of new systems over the past year. Projects include sponsorship of the electronic document management system for 16 departments in partnership with the IT Department. I'd like to take the opportunity to, to thank CIO Hong Se and business analyst Robin Bernhard for their work on the project. The City Clerk Department implemented an ethics and harassment training tracking system in October this year under the leadership of Assistant City Clerk Helen Dryer. And the department is also working with the Police Department and the City Attorney's Office to implement a public records tracking and submittal software. Records requests continue to increase. In fiscal year 2021, the department completed over 775 requests for public documents. Also, during the last 19 months during the pandemic, the department converted public bid openings to a virtual format and began receiving requests for proposals electronically. Regarding boards and commissions, the department assisted the city council in filling 15 seats from numerous applications. The department also hosted the Board and Commission Appreciation Dinner in August, which was well-attended and honored service to individuals who served on the various boards and commissions. Four youth vacancies were recruited for in October to be filled for the Grants Advisory Commission, the Library Board, Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Transportation Commission. There are no scheduled vacancies on boards, commissions, or committees in December. However, in calendar year 2022, there will be seven vacancies for appointment in June and 16 vacancies for appointment in December. A board and commission training program will be developed and offered in early 2023 to train these new members. I would like to conclude with thanking the City Clerk administrative staff for their individual contributions as stewards of the city clerk's role in local government. It's been a great run. In December, I will close my work at the City of Roseville.
What?
I thank you for the vote of confidence and your support of the roles of great responsibility handed by the City Clerk Department. I have no doubt that the department is good hands, is in good hands, and hands that will continue to deliver exceptional service. That concludes my presentation. my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Excellent. Thank you, Sonia. We're going to keep you here with lots of questions tonight.
Do you have to report that we're, after the questions, we are going to need to take a recess? The ballot counting software is not working, so they have to hand tabulate the balance this evening. So I would estimate 30 minutes after my presentation.
Okay, excellent. I will open, well, does council have any questions of Sonia before I open up a public comment?
Questions.
Okay. All right, so I'll open up the public comment if there are no questions right now. Does anyone want to speak to this item with Sonia's update of the City Clerk's office? Okay, I will close public comment, and there's no action required this evening, but if the council would like to ask her any final questions, comments?
Well, I'll happy to start. Sonia, I am just so sad that you're going to retire. I'm happy for you. I mean, you absolutely have earned this. And ever since I got on the council, actually even before that, running for election, your office has been so helpful, supportive, just explaining things sometimes more than once. And I always appreciate going into your office and talking about issues. I think you guys are very knowledgeable, and you've done such a wonderful job. And I wish we could twist your arm for more years out of you, but I know you deserve this, and so don't want to put a huge guilt trip on you, but man, I am really going to miss you.
Thank you.
This is just going to be, I'm sure they'll bring in a rock star to replace you, but it's going to take a long time to fill those shoes, I think. So just as a council member and a community resident, thank you so much for your service. And your department rocks. They're really good at what they do.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to put the guilt trip on you. No, I won't. I think you, you know, your presentation was so succinct, it really, it really doesn't reflect all you and your staff have to juggle. You're really the archivists of the city. You know, our city's what, 115 is 1909, so how many years and how many predecessors in the City Clerk's role? But, you know, getting agenda packets together that are sometimes this big, you know, not just for City Council, but for various boards and commissions that we have, takes a lot of work and a lot of attention to detail, and your staff does it, and you do it, because you have to oversee and make sure that happens impeccably, right? And, you know, we get Freedom of Information Act requests. You have to coordinate, you know, not only internally in your department, but with the City Attorney's Office, the City Manager's Office. I mean, it is an enormous, excuse me, an enormous amount of work that you and your staff do. And, you know, and you do it gleefully. Well, at least I say it gleefully. You do it, you know, professionally and without, you know, I mean, without, you know, it's just a lot of work. And you do it on time, and thank you.
You're welcome.
And we will have you on the podium one more time, right, to send you off?
If you insist.
So this is not a goodbye. This is just a departmental update.
That's right.
Okay, let's
Well, I just want to make sure.
Be clear. Any comments?
Sonia, since this is not your last night, I am going to save all of my commentary for when that time arrives, because I don't want to shoot you out of here any faster than necessary. I appreciate the update. I can attest, as well as our other council members, the work that your department does. Steady hand in many hands make light work. I've seen that firsthand, you know, before being elected and now being elected. I've been able to pull the curtain back a little bit and really see a lot of what the City Clerk does, more so than what I think our public is able to see on the other side of that glass. We're lucky to have a strong department in our City Clerk's office. But it's not so much the number of people we have working there. It's the skill and the knowledge that we have, and that's just not something that you can just go out there and grab off the street. That comes with good leadership, mentorship, all of which, you know, has come down under your, under your time here. And I think that speaks volumes, because not a lot of cities have, they have people, but they don't have knowledge. And they don't have, you know, the level of compassion and just firsthand, you know, willingness to solve the problems that fall underneath the City Clerk's purview. And like I say, now that I've been able to see both sides from a resident perspective and from an elected perspective, it is quite amazing what you guys jam into a normal business day. So thank you for the update tonight. Thank you for shining a light on all the work that you and your department do. And like I say, I will save my other send-off for you for when that time is appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. Sonia, I have always thought that the term "City Clerk" underestimates the purview that you as a department head are responsible for. So I appreciate the update. I like having Helen here, but I do miss you, too, not being right next to me. I will say that you and all of your staff, whether they're in the passport office or here in City Hall, are all, I feel like, progressive, you know, with you opened up that new passport center, which is so public-facing, which I know we have received calls about, you know, how do you get in, and the customer service, and people often panicked when they're going in to get their passport. So I know the numbers are not what you wanted for them to be, but I think they're really impressive considering the closure that you've done. And my family and I were some of those numbers in there, and it was a really pretty easy process. So anyway, thanks to you. Thanks for giving us this update this evening. We will definitely see you back here next month. So we appreciate the information. So because we have a delay in the processing of the ballots, I suggest that we move into our final comments and then see what the progress is in that room. So, staff, do you have any comments for us? Our city manager or our city attorney, Dahmer Michelle?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay.
No further reports from us, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy, do you want to kick us off with any comments?
I have some council updates.
Yep, let's do it.
So I had the opportunity to join my fellow council members at a few events since our last council meeting, one of which is on the east side of Roseville within my district at Midu Park. The Midu Fitness Court opened up, I believe it was a week ago, like, I forget, I think it was 10 days ago. It was a week ago, last Saturday. If you haven't had a chance to come, check that out. It's really, really great. There's an opportunity for you to test your skills in various, various ways. They've got stationary equipment, as well as some really well-marked, I don't want to say footwork, but on the mat itself, it takes you through several exercises and different workout routines. It's really cool. We're one of just a few cities that was selected to have this type of a fitness court. It's to the left. If you're pulling into the Midu Park there, if you're coming in, you want to take a left, and that's just adjacent to the indoor fitness area and the large banquet room that they have there. You can't miss it. It's a big blue wall. You can actually see it from Rocky Ridge when you pull in. Another thing that we were able to celebrate with my fellow council members, there was a Veterans Day celebration out at William Jessup at the flagpole. Very nicely attended with many local electeds, and we had the opportunity to hear several former and current military personnel enlisted speak. And it was really, really good to gather together and honor our veterans. And then most recently this week, over at Royer Park, just on the other side of the tennis courts, I was able to join my fellow council members. They redid the basketball courts in collaboration with the Sacramento Kings and Kaiser Permanente to paint that in the old. So there's the new Kings logo, which is the purple and silver. This is a tribute to the retro Kings logo when they were the Kansas City Kings. It's the white and blue traditional logo. Really great. They surfaced that basketball court with new backboards and resurfacing of that. So it looks really, really nice. If you have an opportunity to go out there and get a game going with your friends, it really is a good addition to the park and certainly something that stands out. And again, this is another one of those opportunities where Roseville was selected and were part of a handful of cities that were able to take advantage of that opportunity through the Kings and in collaboration with Kaiser Permanente. So that's just my update. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Haddishel?
Yeah, a few things. I had an opportunity to attend our seniors commission last week. They have an exciting new strategic plan in their, in their, that they've put together. And they're nested under Parks, Recreation, and Library. And, you know, I encourage them to, at some point in time, come to the council and share with us what their, what their vision is on helping seniors. You know, it includes, you know, things, simple things like, you know, smartphone savvy. But they really have, they've got a really good strategic plan going forward. Like my colleagues attended a number of Veterans Day events. I happened to go to the one in Lincoln, where they have the county veterans memorial wall, and they unveiled a new panel with, that included Marine Sergeant Nicole Gies on that. In addition, I'd be remiss not to tell you to turn into KVIE sometime in the next week to watch a program, a documentary called Sharing Butte Creek, because that's about the partnership between agriculture and conservationists. Butte Creek runs by the Chico area, so it's, I'd encourage you to view that. Also, later this week, we'll have the next, in a series of meetings, that are the county-city discussion on how to, how to house the unsheltered going forward. So that continues, and I think that'll do it for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvar.
We had several presentations earlier for the month of November, but one of the things that we didn't do, and I'm kind of surprised, but it's also Adoption Awareness Month in November. And I just wanted to say that, there's, I know our family, we're an adoptive family, and I know there are many hundreds and hundreds in our city, and some wonderful organizations that help get children into permanent homes and help families, you know, have children. And I think that's an important thing, and I just wanted to recognize that. The mayor and I got to speak at the Veterans Day of Honor at the Heritage Oaks Memorial Chapel, and they honored all of the, for the last couple of years because of the pandemic, all of the members of our community who have died. And so a lot of families were there. It was a pretty solemn ceremony. It was pretty neat, nice to be able to talk to the families. As was mentioned in one of the presentations earlier, I got to participate in the DiValli Light Festival and go on a nine-mile driving circuit around the city, and that was very interesting. I hadn't done that before in that kind of a festival. And the community was just really great, and a lot of people, you know, wondering what was going on with all the lighted-up cars driving around the city. But that's neat, and trying to, myself trying to learn a little bit more about a culture I'm not used to, I'm not familiar with. And also, we all attended the Placer City and County Officials' Dinner, and we hadn't gotten together in a long time, the elected officials throughout the county. And we met out at Quarry Park in Rockland, and it was just really neat. I got a, you know, we had key staff there from all the different jurisdictions and almost all the electeds, and we were just kind of buzzing, I think, because we hadn't seen each other face-to-face. There'd been a lot of Zoom meetings, and it was just nice to get together and talk and laugh. A lot of laughter was going on. And those connections are really important, because there are a lot of things we have to team up with other cities on in keeping those relationships strong. You know, council, we have to deal with a lot of crazy stuff. And, you know, sometimes we get people calling us, and they're angry because of immigration, you know, some stuff we have no control over sometimes. And there's decisions that get made that not everybody likes, and it's a tough job once in a while, but there's some fun things that we get to do, too. And Monday, I got to speak to Cub Scout Pack 1533, and it was, it was great. Boys and girls in this pack, and they had some awesome questions. And you could tell we've got some future leaders growing up there in the scouting thing. And so I know that's something that we really enjoy, getting out and speaking to kids, because, you know, they have no clue what we do, and it's just fun having the conversation with them. And the last thing I just wanted to mention is, you know, Thanksgiving is next week. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. We'll see you when it's all over with. Take some time to tell people thank you. There's a lot of important people in our lives, and it really means a lot to say thank you. So happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Well, I think it's all been said.
There's a parade. There's a parade outside.
Yeah, so I would just reiterate many, some of the things that my colleagues have said, you know, for those that follow along, watching us and keep an eye on the City Council, you know, we have, we spend our time in a number of ways. We spend it at events and supporting the community. We spend it on committees outside of this council that works on policies related to Roseville. And then we have our council meeting. This is probably where we spend the least amount of our time together, but we spend many hours outside of these council meetings, doing our best to represent and advocate for our great city and our region. So our calendars are full with that, and I've definitely noticed a difference between more things popping up on our calendar. So I think that's in terms of being in person, which is a good thing. Congratulations to Nina and your family. Welcome. You guys stuck it out the whole time. It's impressive. And I just, the parade will be on Saturday, which if you are in town, I won't be here, but it is like such a way to kick off the holidays. And so I'll be sorry to miss it. But I will be taking some time with my family. And just what Councilmember Alvar said, it's Thanksgiving, and hopefully we all do our best to try to be thankful every single day. I think life's better that way when we focus on what we're thankful for. So our, this finishes us off for our November meetings, and we will be back here December 3rd? I always miss
First.
The first? Okay.
Except for a break that we have to take, right?
We have to recess, yes. So we'll get a status update on our ballot counting.
They do the extra public comment page right now?
Yes, I'll do, yes, thank you. One last public comment. Does anyone want to say anything before we, well, you can all go. We have to stay for a little bit. But any other comments before we go?
No.
Okay. Well, we'll just
Recede.
We'll just recess, and we will sit tight until we get the results of the ballots from the lighting and landscaping district.
They said they're almost done, so
Okay.
It'll just take a few minutes.
All right. So you can all, don't feel like you have to stay. You can all go. We'll sit. You can all go, and we'll sit.